Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Ward is gone, so I will be leading the meeting. Do roll?
Roll has been taken.
Okay. What about meeting minutes? Do you need to approve any -- approve this?
No minutes for this packet? I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't have an agenda in front of me. Okay, it's on the agenda apparently.
Oh, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion approved, minutes approved.
Thank you.
And then Director Miesmer, what do we have on the agenda?
No correspondence this evening, other than that related items on the agenda. So I think our first item is the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yep, and I'd like to take just a minute to introduce Nathan Goldschmidt. Nathan is our environmental planner. He's been with us now for, what, about a year, Nathan? Yeah, and we're absolutely thrilled to have him onboard, he's a great hand. So he's gonna take that National Guards' conditional use permit for us.
Thank you, Libby. So, thank you Commissioners. The project that I'm gonna be discussing today is for the renovation in addition to the Anacortes Readiness Center. So the agent on behalf of the property owner has requested a conditional use permit for the construction of an addition to the existing Anacortes Readiness Center. Work includes a 3,600-square-foot building addition with new classrooms and a fitness center, and a corridor that will link the classrooms and the fitness center to an exit. The proposed renovation will also include alterations to the portion of the existing building, including new toilet, shower rooms, kitchen, conference room, mother's room, multipurpose room, a new ADA lift, and seismic upgrades. And the applicant is Clint Treat. So some of the background for the project. The applicant applied for a pre-application meeting, which was held on the 26th of April, and they submitted their application for the conditional use permit on May 3rd. It was deemed complete shortly after on May 9th. To meet the requirements for a conditional use permit, we had a neighborhood meeting where the applicant described the necessity for the renovations in the addition, and how it would help them meet their goals and their needs. A notice of application and hearing was submitted on June 7th, and the comment period ended on June 29th, and we received only one public comment that requested that construction occurred during the allotted, or the city recommended, construction hour times. So this is a, if you can see that, you probably can't see the wording very well, and I can blow this up a little bit. So this is their site plan that they submitted. In the northeast corner of the property here, they are proposing to construct a bioretention facility to deal with 4,425 square feet of replaced impervious surface area, the goal of which is to improve onsite water quality for stormwater. And the northwest corner of the existing building, you can't see very well, but they're proposing to do a new fence to hold some new mechanical equipment. And in the north, the northeast corner of the existing readiness center, they're proposing their addition. This is a close-up of their proposed addition. Those are the three classrooms right there on the northeast side. They're all about the same size, approximately 600 square feet. And on the upper left of this slide is the fitness room, all connected by that corridor leading to the exit. Here's the east and north elevation for their proposal. You can see that dark, or that black polygon in the north elevation is the location of the proposed addition. So why we're here is that the Anacortes Readiness Center is considered a public safety facility, which is conditionally approved within the R4 zone. And since they're doing a significant alteration to the existing facility, we're requiring, per our code, that they go through the conditional use permit application. So as I just mentioned, public safety facilities are permitted in the R4 zone with a conditional use permit. And what they've submitted, the new facility meets the conditional use permit and site plan review criteria. One of the things that they'll be doing to improve water quality onsite is the installation of that biotension facility, which will bring it more up to code with current stormwater requirements from Department of Ecology. The proposed addition is not anticipated to increase the building occupancy. The proposal is in compliance with the R4 form and intensity standards, so setbacks and landscaping area and things of that nature. We only received one comment from the public, and like I said, it was related to making sure that they adhere to the city-determined construction hours. So with that, the staff recommendation is based upon the application, the findings of fact, or the conclusions of the staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the conditional use Let me know if you guys have any questions as well.
Commissioner Monier? Go ahead, yeah. Go ahead, that was my way of telling you, ask your question.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Is this the last intended set of facility being developed at this site, or is the applicant considering future construction for future projects?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think that one of the ideas behind them getting this conditional use permit at this time will mean that it's vested under that conditional use permit to be a permitted use, so that future additions or things that they want to do on that property wouldn't have to go through the conditional use permit process. I haven't heard of any future plans for the site. It was built in the '60s, so there are some building code upgrades, like I mentioned the seismic renovations, which would be really helpful for the safety of the building and the people stationed there, along with comfort for more female service members who have joined the force since, or joined the guard since legislation has changed on that matter. Yeah, and just bringing it up more towards building code and allowing for more classrooms and a fitness center should suffice for their current needs, but I haven't heard anything about the future.
The reason I ask is I wonder if it would benefit the city to inquire of the applicant about future, and maybe as a condition, asking them to prepare a master plan for the facility, and then have that master plan brought forward with all of its own goals, objectives-
Sure.
...with inside the code.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. We can, I'll pass it along to the applicant as well and see what their perspective is on that, if they have any idea of what they're planning on doing for the future, if this will, you know, suffice.
Facilitate the whole process.
Yeah, great idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Malino?
Yes, sir.
I have Clint Treat is on line here to answer some of your questions as well.
Oh, excellent.
Clint, you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and talk.
Thank you, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Thank you.
Yes.
I hope you can hear me. Oh, great. The, to the question from the Commissioner here, the plan for the site is really to meet the current needs, as Nathan had stated. There is no future, you know, planned addition. The master plan essentially for the facility is not to be expanded. Washington Military has indicated that they are looking, you know, at a 20-year, 50-year roadmap of alternative sites, so I don't see a need for, you know, additional design at this time to build a master plan for that concern. So, but yeah, I think the end goal is to bring the site within its current required zoning of the, being under a conditional use permit. So, that said, I don't know that, I don't know if that answers your question about, you know, them having no future plan for an addition there, I think that they're kind of maxing out what they want now. So that's my understanding as of today.
Thank you. It does answer my question. The second is, good luck with the strategic site selection and master plan process with the state. I've dealt with them for seven years on that and still waiting for them to produce a set of proper sites, so good luck.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Oh, yeah, Director Miesmer, sorry.
No worries. I think at this time it would be a good idea to open the public hearing formally, yes, and then accept any public comment. If there is none, you could close the hearing and then go ahead for a motion.
Let's open the public hearing. Do we have anyone?
Madam Chair, we have no one with their hand raised for questions.
Out will, is anything else, should we close?
Close, Madam Chair, if I may, one just raised her hand.
Hello, hi. My name is Suzanne Gilbert. Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. It's so funny when it just blanks out on me. Anyway, I just wanted to say I am a project manager with the Department of Enterprise Services, DES, and we're hired to assist the military group in getting their building permit and the construction process. I live over in Mount Vernon, and I'm a regional area project manager. Clint Treat, who just you heard from, is with WJA, he's the architect, project architect for the project. And I guess one thing I wanted to say, make the comment of, is we are looking for the conditional use permit in order to get the building permit. We would like to put this project out to bid in August, and so we do need both of those things to move forward. And so I would hope that any master planning wouldn't necessarily tie that process up. I think we would, I would state, we would be, we are unaware that we would have needed a master plan in order to get the building permit. So my hope is, is the condition won't stop the building permit and the CUP moving forward. And I certainly understand frustration on long-range planning, trying to figure out where the military is going to put their expanded program. But I can assure you, we've been through several of those discussions, and any expanded program will not fit on this site. And so I would say that if they do expand the program, then we could do a full-on master plan. So am I understanding that you guys would not be putting a condition on releasing the building permit with the master plan?
It wasn't, it wasn't my question, I think, was it something you wanted to add to the condition?
No, I would not.
Okay, I don't, I think it was just a question-
It was a question.
Not a condition.
Great, okay, thank you very much. And I just want to say how impressed we are working with the building department and with Nathan on helping us with all of the questions we've had and expediting. It has been just a really positive experience working with your department over there. And the military is thrilled that we can move forward with these things. We think everyone in Anacortes is gonna be happy with the upgraded changes on that building. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Are there any more comments on the line?
Madam Chair, there are not.
And with that, shall we, we'll close the hearing? And now would like, anyone like to make a motion? Or have any more questions or comments?
With one question to staff, what, I spent more time on the other one. There were no conditions on this, were there? Beyond the normal construction times, lighting, et cetera?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Just the normal.
Yeah, okay, with the-
Standard conditions.
With the standard conditions, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, the motion passes. All right, and next, next on the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the audience, and those folks that are at home. Tonight, what I'd like to do is, do you give a brief introduction to the Commissioners and the public regarding riparian corridors? And riparian corridors were previously named streams and buffers. And so what we've done is looked at best available science with geoengineers, and decided that probably one of the best ways to approach this is to use WDFW's guidelines somewhat, also using part of Seattle's code to make this work. And so riparian corridors is one of the options that we chose as a draft. What I have up on the slide here is a reference to wetland buffer averaging, Section 197235, and not reduce less than 75 percent, and that is in a requirement from the Growth Management Hearings Board. And so you'll see under N5, I wanted to make it clear that we've struck, unless for the purpose of creating connectivity in corridors, in which case no less than 50, the, it is in fact no less than 75 percent for the future, as our proposal there. Now we'll get into the riparian corridors. So the riparian corridor consists of the riparian water course, which was previously called a stream, and the riparian management zone, which was previously noted as a buffer. The riparian management zone is the area within no less than 100 feet of the riparian water course, measured from the ordinary high watermark. The riparian management zone may exceed 100 feet based on Section 197330B3, which is a requirement for a critical area report that would take into consideration site potential tree height, and we'll get into more about that here in a few minutes. So this is a basic table from Department of Natural Resources that describes what the types of streams are. Type S, type F, which are fish, type NP, non-fish, type NS, non-fish seasonal. And I should also mention that this is scheduled for a public hearing next Wednesday, and we have invited as a presenter Fiona McNair, and she's with Geoengineers, she's the biologist that put together the best available science report and updated that for the city. She'll talk more about some of the stream types and what it really means for the buffers. So this is an example of what we're talking about. In the slide, you have the active channel, which is the riparian water course, and then at the bottom there, you see the riparian management zone. And so the dashed line by the channel, that would be considered, for instance, the ordinary high watermark on both sides, and then the riparian management zone is 100 foot from that dashed line on each side of the riparian water course. And so this talks about the development, if there's any proposed development within a riparian corridor, that applicant would be required to provide a critical areas report, prepared by a qualified professional, describing the functions and values of the riparian management zone, and we're gonna call that RMZ for short. And that would be based on the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife site potential tree height, but in no case would the RMZ be less than 100 feet. And then most common in Anacortes, the site potential tree height is ranged from 165 to 189 feet. And there, we've got the website that you can check to see what those are for certain streams or creeks or rivers in the area. So this is development parcels, or excuse me, development standard for parcels within riparian corridors. And this goes on and, you know, talks about, long-term goal of the city is to restore the city's riparian corridors and protect salmon passage where scientifically justified. And the city has determined the best available science supports protecting these riparian corridors. The, you know, riparian corridor development is permitted within or over unless it meets certain criteria. For instance, you know, if there is no other access available, if somebody's got a riparian corridor on their property, they're looking to build something there, and there's no other way to access it than crossing that riparian corridor, then there are certain things that they would have to apply to their project, which includes that critical area report before they even get started. Critical area report's going to talk about what the disturbance of that corridor is, and that should be kept to a minimum, the material types that would be used, non-toxic, et cetera, creosote's not permitted. And then in that water course, any action detrimental to the habitat or actions affecting trees and vegetation, including limited clearing or removal is prohibited, except where it's absolutely necessary to do that. And then when that does take place, or if it does, then they would have to provide a riparian corridor restoration plan. And so, and that's part of our goal with this, is to, throughout this riparian management zone, wherever any action may take place, is to make sure that, first of all, there's a critical areas report that identifies the functions and values that are existing, and how that can be restored in a better way than what's there now. Many of the streams or creeks that are out there right now in the community, folks have been mowing up to the top of the bank, and they could be inundated with noxious weeds. And so the idea is to try and make those better, simply. So riparian management zone, again, development is prohibited in there unless, of course, you have that access, that cannot be provided elsewhere. And then the other idea here is that on platted lots existing prior to the adoption of the ordinance, which is 4025 for this, once it gets adopted or it doesn't, then the development is limited to the riparian development area, which is the area in the riparian management zone, more than 75 feet from the top of the riparian water course bank for type F waters, with anadromous fish present for any part of the year, and more than 50 feet from the top of the riparian water course bank for type F waters, where anadromous fish are not present for any part of the year, and more than 50 feet for NP and NS waters. And again, when our biologist comes in next week, she'll talk more about, you know, fish bearing and the types of streams, based on WDFW and DNR's typing of those streams. The other thing that would have to happen is that the development would have to comply with the city's stormwater quality and flow control requirements. So it'd have to, it would have to comply with Chapter 19.76, they'd have to have a stormwater report, and in many cases, they may have to reroute driveway water or roof water from directly entering that stream corridor or the riparian water course. Again, and it would limit the impervious surface area to the same as that within Title 19, in most areas 35 percent. Then one of the other items, of course, is if there's going to be activity within that riparian management zone, the ecological function will be restored so that it prevents erosion, protects water quality, and provides diverse habitat. And the restoration results in greater protection of the riparian water course in the management zone. So all of that would have to take place before any development activity could take, could be taken place within the management zone. And this, this section is what's called the small project waiver, the director may approve fences, rockeries, or similar features, or temporary disturbance for installation of utility lines, things like that, in that riparian management zone. Excuse me, if no constructions occurs over in or within 15 feet of the water course or water body. As long as it meets all this criteria. So basically, it's, you know, has a legal building site consistent with Section 1949040, which is non-conforming structures, and the feature does not contain any floor area, it does not remove trees or native vegetation, does not block wildlife movement through the riparian management zone, mitigates impacts to ecological functions. And then a couple of other items there that it talks about having a barrier during construction to protect the management zone, and mitigation necessary to offset area of both temporary and permanent development. And so in your packet, and which will also be included in next week's packet for the public hearing, will be the revised buffer best available science review with the buffer recommendations that was provided by Fiona McNair Geoengineers. And with that, you'll find mapping of water courses to include all named water courses that have always been in our critical areas ordinance on fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, and there are eight unnamed water courses. So the city does not have a process for naming those water courses. The ones that have been named were named some time ago, I want to say probably sometime around 2008 maybe, when that critical areas ordinance was rewritten at that time. Table 3.1 of the best available science report discusses the Anacortes stream summary information, it describes the existing buffer condition, and then the agency mapping that talks about whether or not it's potentially fish-bearing or not. And then in that report, also, there's a summary of recommendations in Section 3.5.1. So as brief as that is, for just an introduction, I wanted to make sure that the, you know, Planning Committee understood that, you know, this evening is really just that, an introduction. We have notified the public that we're having the public hearing next week, and we are currently accepting written comments up until that meeting, and as the Commissioners know, it could take another meeting after that or two. We're trying to finish the process with the Commission and City Council by August 18th. If we don't make that, that's the deadline that was set by the Growth Management Hearings Board for this process. But it could go longer than that, and if we have to, we can ask for an extension from the Growth Management Hearings Board. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I look forward to having our biologist here next week and having a more thorough presentation for the community and the Commissioners.
I have a question, I don't know if, how it relates, but I know a lot of, maybe on more of a countywide, there are like fish bridges and culverts that are being removed. How does this play into that? Does this, is that, is that part of the exemption portion of it? Or I was just curious how that, how that works, meshes with this.
That's a great question, Madam Chair. So if, for instance, there was a project that had a stream onsite and they needed to cross that, then yes, a bridge would be required, or some type of fish passage covert, depending on the type of that stream. Regardless of, you know, these regulations, of course, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife would be involved with that, but through, through the processes here, before they even got started, they'd have to provide that critical area report from a biologist to tell us exactly what they, what they are hoping to do- to tell us exactly what they, what they are hoping to do, what the impacts are, how they're going to mitigate those impacts, and what type of crossing they're going to use.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions for Director Miesmer? Sounds like we'll get more information next week.
Looking forward to a very good presentation next week. Thank you.
Thank you. If anything further on the agenda tonight? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.